I have no minutes from past meetings. I have a set of minutes that I need to do from the prior finance committee which I will submit to Barbara and Councilor Kozinski for approval since it has to do with those minutes. Anybody here from the public? I don't see any public. Well, we will take up new business on the city council budget. I'm not sure we're here to talk about it, but I told, promised Barb we'd talk about it the next meeting.
No.
Okay, Joe. We're not going to take up the city council budget until the next meeting because Barbara wants to be involved with this. Let's talk about, I want to jump to the request for the cable franchise fee because Val wants to speak to it unless you're willing to stay for everything. But you wanted to speak to it, Val? So let's find that document. Tell us what it's all about. It seems as though they're saying you have to do it.
How are you doing?
Basically, in the past, there was no provision for a cable special revenue account. And in 2005, the city council voted a gift account for use for the PEG access.
What is PEG access again?
The cable charter revolving that, you know, we take in money from charter and then we pay them and some of it comes to us and some of it goes to them for the operation of the local access.
So it's now a gift account?
Yes. We actually have two accounts. We have one the council voted as a gift account and then charter gave us a contract where they give us an amount of money every so often that we're allowed to use for capital things for the cable access. And it says right in that contract that it's a grant, so I have that set up as a grant account.
And those funds, those funds come the first year of the contract and the fifth year of the contract?
And the other one is a gift account to account for monies that are gathered from customers, basically?
Exactly. It's a percent from the, a percentage on the prescribers. And that comes year to?
Right. And the council set up this account years ago to account for it, to basically. So now?
Because otherwise, it would be determined to be general fund money and there would be no way to pay out what we need to pay out to the cable company.
Right.
So they've voted a gift account, but technically it's not a gift.
So this new legislation does what?
It allows communities to set up, it has two provisions. There is one that allows a community to set up a revolving account to use for the purpose. And there's another one that allows them to set up an enterprise fund for the purpose. But we don't need an enterprise fund and I don't think you want to deal with setting up budgets and all of that to do an education.
So we're going to set up a revolving account and discontinue these accounts? It sounds like they're saying-
You're going to keep two. You're going to keep two.
You're going to keep the grant account?
The gift account is what Val labels the grant account because it, that's for capital that comes in twice in a 10-year contract.
Right. I thought the grant account was one account and the gift account was another.
Right.
The gift account is the one we're getting rid of.
Yes. I'm just going to change the gift account into a revolving account after we accept the legislation. So it'll be the same account, but to DOR, it will be recorded as under this legislation instead of a gift account.
So this is basically cleaning up accounting for the DOR?
Absolutely.
They came out and said that any account they see that looks like a PEG access, when they look at our balance sheets, that they're going to close it to general fund if we haven't accepted this legislation. So we don't want that to happen.
So we have to accept the legislation because otherwise we lose the account and the money is in it?
Yes, exactly. It becomes free cash.
Yeah.
And then you'll have to vote free cash to support the cable company every year.
And what happens is when we receive the PEG access on a yearly basis, 95% goes to the community access.
Yes. What does PEG stand for?
Public Education, Educational, National.
Anyway.
I had looked it up.
So.
Oh, and governmental.
Yeah, I said governmental, but that's in-
Educational, governmental.
Sounds like DOR is kind of forcing our hand and we should do this, otherwise we'll have a problem.
Well, we don't have to do it, but then we wouldn't be able to keep it in the account that it is now and anything left every year would just go back into the general fund to become free cash like any other leftover funds every year. We wouldn't be able to keep it as an ongoing account. That's the difference.
I mean, there is another way. If you wanted to split the account up and put the part that you pay to the cable station in a fiduciary type account like the police outside detail where it's just in and out to zero funds.
I just want to do whatever makes it easy for you.
This is easier.
This is easier and this is easier to follow.
We need to do it so it's easy and it's, DOR's happening.
Yep.
Yes.
Any questions from you, Peg, on this?
Yeah.
Sounds, Joe?
Yeah, so the E- or East Hampton community's operating budget, is it 100% by these two appropriations that once every five years and the yearly? Is that?
Well, the capital, they also receive capital, but they don't receive, you know, they receive, they have, there's actually an agreement for the PEG where they receive 95% of the PEG. And I don't know what other revenue they would have. They're an independent, it's East Hampton Community Access.
Attention, name to East Hampton Community Access?
Right. They're, exactly. So I don't know what other funds, but those are the funds from the city.
Did you say these are only capital expenditures? So?
One, there's two different things that come in. The capital comes in twice in a 10-year contract in year one and year five. And PEG access comes in annually.
So the capital account is the grants account? That's where that money goes?
Yes.
And they use that pretty much for buying capital?
It has to be used for, it has to be used for cable access.
So the grant account equals, I want to write that in, capital. Okay?
So there's no more benefit or detriment doing this? It's just strictly a, we're keeping things, changing the type of account to be in a compliance of DOR?
Right.
And if we don't, it would all flow back into the city on a yearly basis instead of keeping it separate, I mean, you know?
I don't believe this needs a public hearing. It's just that we, the council, accept them. Am I correct on that? I'm pretty sure, I'll check with Barbara, but I'll take a motion, Peg, to accept this legislation?
Second?
All right. You make the motion now, second.
I'll make a motion to accept this legislation.
All right. Any other discussion?
Do you want me to vote?
You only vote by charter if we time, if we tie.
Not if someone's missing?
I'll say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. This is passed two to zero?
Thank you, Val.
I'll ask, thank you for coming because without you, we would have had more questions.
And thanks for doing this.
Okay. Thank you.
Just so that you know too, Val's been doing, I don't know how many years now, of cleaning up all accounts so that they're just easily to see and, you know, readily available, so it's been extremely helpful.
I know the retirement thing's going to take a little bit, so I'm going to get the easy stuff out of the way first, Tina. Thank you. The EHS construction borrowing authorization, we have to rescind that.
Please.
This is a manner of, this is just a, it sounds like bookkeeping, it's cleaning up, right?
Exactly. What this is, this is usually a good vote. This is, as you can see, and you're probably familiar with, because we've just done some borrowing authorizations, but the council voted a borrowing authorization for the new East Hampton High School project, you know, way back. And, right, and there was a little over 43 million that authorized the city to borrow those funds. So we're all done with the project. Everything is done, paid for, and we do not need and have not borrowed the 27 million, 191, 108.
It's because the state financed the law.
Well, parts of it, there's lots of different reasons. It's, you know, like what we paid, what was reimbursed, but we never borrowed that amount. We only borrow what we need when we need it. So even though the council authorizes the city to borrow 43 million, we don't go and borrow the 43 million. We borrow as needed to pay it.
And that was the cap? 43 was the cap?
That's exactly the cap. And no matter what we're reimbursed from the state, we're required to have all the money in place. Whether we would get reimbursed or not reimbursed, we, actually, our reimbursement was, you know, very good reimbursement where the parts of it were 63% on reimbursable items. But whether we can get reimbursement or not, the whole amount of money has to be in place. So the council's voted to approve the 43 million and, but we only borrow as we need to pay it. So when we're getting our reimbursements in monthly, we only borrow what we need for payments. So we never borrowed the 27, out of that 43, we never borrowed the 27, 191, 108, and we don't need to, so we would like to rescind that borrowing authorization.
I don't want you to borrow it.
Yeah. I do figure.
The only way you could borrow it is if you did it for this project. You can't use this money for something else anyway.
Absolutely.
They suddenly want a new auditorium over there. You couldn't do it for that. It has to be part of the original project.
Definitely has been.
So we can't use it anyway.
Does this 27 million stay on the books as a liability until we rescind it?
No, because it's not, oh, you mean, it's just, we have borrowing authorization, but it's not on any books because we, I mean, it's not-
It's not like a credit card where you, the higher the limit, the more it kind of impacts your credit rating?
No. But we don't want any, you know, we don't want a borrowing authorization out there because we don't need it.
It might impact future bond requests because they think we have so much bond authority. They're going to say, wait a minute, you already have.
And that's where PEG was going with that.
That's where you're going with it.
That's exactly where she's going with it.
So there's a good reason to this because our bond rating is very good right now.
Clean up the books, get it off.
It needs to, it needs to zero out, like, you know, just the same way the projects zero it out.
I have absolutely no problem with this. I'll make a motion that we rescind the borrowing authorization. Discussion. Joe, you have anything? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Two to zero. Very good. Can you just give me a rundown, Karen? How are we with the kennel donation? I know we were waiting on legal opinion. Are we anywhere near that? We had that on the books for it.
I know. And, you know, and I apologize, President McCoy has not forgotten, nor have I. Unfortunately, we've had our city attorney busy in many, many, many different venues that were really hot. So he has not forgotten. And it's just, and that again, is just a matter of cleanup because it's so old, it mentioned board of selectmen in town meetings. So the question was, first of all, it is a trust, but the question is, can we clean up the language? Can we alter it? If we can, does it need city council and mayor action? Does it just need city council?
We're waiting on a legal opinion on that.
On how to just change it. So that's where it's at. And again, he hasn't forgotten, he's just had really priorities on the burner.
Okay. Very good. All right. So for the record, we're not going to deal with the city council's budget until the 27th, in which case maybe, Joe, you would like to attend that as the council budget and also Barbara's asked to attend that because she administered that budget.
Barb?
Barbara. So, retirement board. Hi, Tina. Tina Schneider. This is Peg Coniff, new counselor.
Hi, Tina.
James Dunham. He's the chair of the board. Jim, is that right?
Yep.
Okay. Let me review. Unfortunately, I apologize especially to Tina and James, but we're going to have to start kind of fresh on this because I wasn't able to make the meeting when they first discussed it and we have all new counselors.
I remember missing one.
Yeah, but that's, he'll catch up.
Okay.
And I say that because, as I understand it, this is in the budget, we still have to approve it before it could be dispersed. If we approve this, it can be dispersed anytime in this fiscal year. I got this from Melissa. So let's say we approve it May, then the money's distributed to the board at that time. It can be retroactively distributed because the money's in the budget. It can.
And not. Once you vote, that money can be distributed.
That's what I mean.
Yeah. I can't retro pay them.
No, but you could distribute it. If it's 3,000 per budget year, which is what your request is, you can distribute it to the board members of 3,000 for this fiscal year.
No. I can only pay them, after it's been voted, I can only pay them prospectively. I can pay them two-
What is prospective, I mean?
I can, I can only pay them for the month.
It's a monthly payment?
Correct.
She didn't, well, all right, I got something wrong from Melissa then.
Okay. It's a monthly payment that's paid every month.
So it's a monthly payment, like the council gets a monthly payment? And up till June 30th, then it starts again?
Correct.
Okay. So the sooner we voted, the sooner you get your monthly payment. Is that true?
Yeah.
So that makes a difference. All right. Here's my plan. We're going to vote on it, we're going to, you're going to tell us all about it tonight, Peg and I. And then unfortunately, on the 27th, I want Dan to be in there with it, Dan Carey. So James, I know that, I'm sorry to ask you. I didn't necessarily need you tonight because I want Tina to start it, but I'm glad you're here. Then next meeting, you can't attend the 27th. So if you could come on the 27th to finish this up, okay? I will try to vote on it at that point, but I'm not sure. It's pretty complicated. Since Melissa gave me some slightly, maybe I misheard her, information, correct me if I'm wrong on the request, okay? The request, the state has allowed the retirement board now to receive no less than 3,000, up to 4,500 per board member, and it includes the treasurer and auditor who are, and one of my questions was ex officio or if they're board members or ex officio members, they are also allowed to receive.
It's a separate vote.
It's a separate vote, but that's a separate request. Okay. But that's what we're talking about.
Correct.
The board is requesting this, and this is where I think the questions will rise because, and I read in the minutes, questions from the other counselors, because of all the meetings they attend, other cities and towns have approved this, a lot of them, we have documents in here showing that, and there's a lot of education involved, and responsibility has increased. Am I correct there, Mr. Dunham? Does that make sense?
As well as they are required to go to educational centers and they have to have some re credits and so, and a financial statement that needs to be filled out.
Yeah, I saw the document in there that shows the financial statement. So there's a lot of responsibility.
Right.
Now, here's the biggie, because I always have fun trying to understand unfunded liability in the retirement fund. This has nothing to do with the general fund in the sense that if we approve this, currently your operational cost is like $3,000 for two members, the treasurer and the auditor. It will increase to 18,000 because we, if it's 3,000 per member, there's six people involved, if we approve the treasurer and the auditor, four board members, five board members plus the treasurer.
Okay.
That's what, that's the money I'm thinking.
I'm doing math.
Okay.
3,000 times 6. 3,000 times 6. Am I right?
If I, no.
Yes and no.
If I might, I can maybe explain it so it's easier to understand. The treasurer and the auditor receive a stipend presently. Okay? And that is under the city's control.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? If they decide to give it to them, which they have, and the amount that they want to give them is also up to them. Okay? The retirement system funds that money, not the city, but the city grants it to them.
Retirement system, that's what I, all right.
Okay. The board stipend is a completely separate thing. So we're talking five board members.
One of which is the auditor.
It, as it, as it happens to be, yes. She is ex officio by law. She is.
Okay.
Okay? So, but the, but the board, those board members in that stipend are particular to those people. Now, in Val's case, she would be eligible for the 3,000 as a board member, and if the city council chooses to give her a stipend on the side, that's a separate issue, but it is there. Okay?
We don't have to do that.
Correct.
She can't, she can't get more than-
4,500 dollars.
What, we can-
In an aggregate.
We can, we are not required-
Correct.
-to be, to give her an additional 1,500. We can make it 3,000 if we choose.
Correct.
We don't have to add the two together.
You do. You do. If you increase it to 3,000, she can only get 1,500 of it. If you leave-
That's what I mean.
Yes.
That's what I mean. Exactly. We have that option. We are not required to make it 4,500 dollars, 1,500 plus 3,000.
Yes, it's, if you say no to the, to giving the increase to both the auditor and the treasurer, the auditor is still entitled to have both. If you increase the auditor to 3,000, she can't recoup the entire 3,000. She has to stay at 1,500.
But if we vote, if we vote, the board, the board members to 3,000.
Correct.
We have a separate vote. She's an auditor, that's a vote, she's on the board, so she gets that 3,000. By separate vote, we have to include the treasurer stipend, and we could increase that to 3,000. And we could limit the auditor, we could remove the 1,500 so she gets the 3,000. I think that's the vote I'm thinking we have to do.
I think there's a minimum, you can't go above or below.
Yeah, $200. By law.
So it has to be 3,200?
Well, no, she would get, assuming it was passed, she would get 3,000 for being a board member.
Right.
And then as the auditor, if the city council gives her a stipend, they can give anything they want, but no less than 200 dollars.
Or we can say nothing. We can say no stipend. Because she's getting the 3,000.
That's a separate issue, separate issue. She's getting 3,000 for being a board member, having nothing to do with being the auditor.
And the ex officio.
I have a problem separating that, but that's just the-
It's, yeah, it's just the way the law is written.
I know. Peg?
So when we talk about this 4,500 combined, are you talking about 3,000 as the stipend as a board member?
Correct.
And then as an ex officio auditor, up to 1,500, well, 1,500, she can't make more than 4,500 stipends.
4,500 in the aggregate, correct.
Although we can, as Dan said, although we can authorize the auditor and treasurer to get up to 3,000, she would only be able to recoup 1,500 of that.
Correct.
But if we brought in somebody who was not a board member, they could enjoy all 3,000 of it?
You can't, the ex officio is, is the auditor.
It has to be a financial member.
That doesn't have to be the auditor.
No.
Could be the treasurer.
No, 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 it can be anybody, but it's got to be one person that has the auditor's similarly responsibilities.
It has to be a financial person.
Oh, but they have to be on the board as well?
No.
Oh.
Ex officio member of the board, yeah.
Yes.
Well, she's one.
Either the treasurer or the auditor or both of them?
Uh, no.
It has to be a financial member of the finance, somebody who can handle the finance.
So it could be, well, an accountant, an auditor, a financial-
And by virtue of being the auditor, you are automatically on the retirement board as a member?
No.
Well, not necessarily.
It does not have to be, it could be a financial person.
I'm saying yes, because typically it is.
No, typically, but that's not when you, it doesn't have to be.
It could be the treasurer because it was the treasurer and then it changed to the auditor.
Person A could be the auditor, person B could be a member.
No, but, no.
The auditor doesn't have to be on it at all.
Yeah, and when the treasurer was on, that was a marital appointment.
But it could be, it could be the finance director. It does not have, it has to be somebody in financial, so it has to be typically somebody from the-
It has to be someone in the financial stream.
Auditor's office, the accountant's office, or the treasurer's office. So it does not have to be the auditor, but it has to be somebody in the finance department. So it could be, it could be the auditor, it could be, in our case, we don't have an accountant or a treasurer, we have an auditor and a finance director. It could be either one of those two people.
Okay.
Right now, it's our auditor.
Okay.
But it doesn't have to be.
If I understand the vote, we vote first to give it to her.
That's her position has it. But that same position that she has does not have to be the auditor, it could be the finance director. Same thing. She does not have to have involvement at all.
But currently, the auditor is doing it.
But currently, the way we have it now is that way.
And we're not changing that. That's not before us. We're not dealing with that at all.
Correct.
So the board, we have two votes, if I understand your request. The first vote is to, to accept the fact that we can give board members 3,000 dollars up to 4,500. But this, this is a big question for me. The city council authorizes that amount. We don't give the retirement board the decision-making power to go from 3,000, maybe they'll change it to 4,500. It's the city council's decision for 3,000 dollars or 3,600, I noticed some people had different figures. But between that 3,000 and 4,500, we make that decision.
Correct.
The retirement board does not.
No.
Okay. The second vote would be to give a stipend to the treasurer and the auditor, should we choose, up to 3,000.
That's a totally separate issue that we don't have to deal with.
But you've made that request that's in here.
We included it in, that we support.
What we said is we would support it.
Okay.
But we're not, there's no request from the retirement board to do that. That's a totally separate issue, but we just put it in that we would support it if that's what you guys chose to do.
Okay. So here's a biggie for me. You have a question?
I was just going to ask to that, if that's what you chose to do, does that mean that that's, if that's something you decide you want to do, which is to increase the auditor's stipend or the city council decides?
City council.
The city council.
But someone would have to bring that to us officially and it hasn't been brought to us?
Yes, it has. It has, kind of has.
So although you support it, you're also asking?
No, we're not asking. I mean, we should, we should be clear about that. That is not our position.
Wait a minute. You have brought before us a request to have board members stipend.
Correct. Correct.
Yes.
Correct. That is the request that we are here for.
So where Peg is coming from, and I think she has a point, is there's no request in front of us to increase the treasurer and auditor's stipends, but it is, it is a supporting document there based on, based on the law.
Yeah, just saying. So saying that we would, the board would not have a problem with that, because the board is the one that's gonna fund that position?
I don't think they need to be separated, Joe. I think we can vote it as two separate votes. I don't think we need to go back to the council and make that decision to send it to us separately.
I don't know, I think I'm kinda separate, especially considering, especially considering if we are moving someone's salary or stipend from 1,500 to 3,000, I'm not sure if I want it.
Well, here's why I'm going that way. This is a biggie. This is coming from the retirement fund, from your normal costs, I think Melissa talked about it. Their fund, the treasurer and auditors, and these board increases the operational expenses of the retirement board, all of which is coming from the retirement fund system. That system, which includes an unfunded liability using actuarials, we pay a certain amount every year, and I think that figure was 27, 2,771,000 last year, Parx said we had to pay.
Yeah.
We being the mayor and the city general fund, okay? Now, this increase of 15,000 over what you've had before was three, according to Melissa, will spread out over time, and I'm not really sure I understand, actuarials and new, whatever they're called, annuities, but it takes a long time, it's a minuscule hit to both that appropriation and to our underfunded liability. It's not much money when you're talking about the millions of dollars involved.
The appropriation doesn't include my salary, board salaries, and my assistant's...
Which appropriation?
The appropriation that the city pays.
That, they pay everything, they're just paying into the retirement fund, an amount that the Parx says we're supposed to pay.
Based on the salaries and the number of employees in city, in school, and...
And retirees.
Retirees.
So it's benefits, it's everything. I understand that. But, but it all goes together, and they may account, there's a minuscule change, it may be, she used the word minuscule with regard to, this is Melissa, which is why next time, we're gonna talk to her some more, with regard to how that's going to affect the unfunded liability and the retirement fund's budget.
Okay. If I could, if I could just...
Am I correct on that?
Well, yes and no, because that amount is already in our budget, and it's already in the actuarial, and it's already included in what the city pays.
That's right, she said it wouldn't, you wouldn't see it for a couple of years, because he's already, they've already included it.
Right, it's, yeah, it was built into the budget, because this has been in place for many, many, many years, we've just never applied for it. But as the time has gone on now, and the requirements are getting much stricter and much harder, you know, a lot more things to do, it became time that we said, okay, because it eats up a lot of time. So, this has been there for a long time, so we could see this coming. We included the money into that, because we knew we were gonna vote for, in case it was proved the money was already in there.
So really, our, this is why I got the, our general fund, the money you appropriate every year, isn't gonna see much, not, you're gonna see any change because of this, because it's already in the budget.
Not for this actuarial thing until this comes out, right?
And when it does come out, it's still very small.
Oh, yes.
Minuscule, because it's only $15,000 regarding over time.
Right.
That's important, because I originally thought this was coming out of the mayor's budget, general, general fund appropriation. It's not.
No.
And because it's so small, it also doesn't really increase the unfunded liability by much, hardly anything. It all adds up. I mean, I know there's a lot of things that go into that, and I certainly tried very hard to understand it. Does that make sense to you, Peg?
Kind of. I have another question. So what did they pay today?
Nothing.
Zero?
Correct.
Except the treasurer and the auditor. Now, the treasurer, the treasurer, excuse me, the finance director, treasurer's office, finance director is no longer a member of the board.
Okay.
And she's, she receives 1,500, and the auditor is part of the board and receives 1,500, but the rest of the four members of the retirement board, four, the rest of the four members of the retirement board receive nothing.
Okay. So we are talking about an aggregate increase of 15,000?
That's correct, that's what I was gonna do.
Exactly. Instead of the 18, because there's already three, exactly.
Joe?
So I'm confused, I thought councilor said they're getting not less than 3,000, so is this adopting something, or how is it that you're getting less than 3,000 now?
We are not. We're getting zero.
Well, it's always less than 3,000.
Yeah, well, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're trying to get that passed through the city council, that's what our request is, and it's, it's something that has been in place for many years for other boards, but it's now, it's now coming to light that they can't get...
In the city of East Hampton? Do we have that anywhere else? Any other boards, city of East Hampton, that we've approved?
Excuse me?
It sounds like you said that this has been approved in other boards?
No, no, no.
Other retirement systems.
In the state, in, you know, many of them are being paid for 4,500 or 4,000.
So we have no choice to go less than 3,000?
Correct. As to where the law is written, in the statutes.
So how often do you guys meet?
Well, that's not necessary.
But, but there are some areas that need to be attended, there are conferences that need to be attended. Sometimes there's a special meeting, depending upon the situation of a rise of disability, or there are policies, or there'd be, you know, a need to do that. There's two conferences a year, there's investment...
Do you have to pay that personally, or you get reimbursed for it?
Reimbursed from the board for the conferences.
Is it just for you, for spouse, or?
No, the board members.
No, no, but can you bring someone?
Yeah, no, you can bring somebody, but you have to pay, you have to pay additionally for that.
So if you brought your spouse, I understand...
No.
Oh, good lord.
No.
You could take your spouse, like I understand as a kid cot meeting once, you could take your spouse to that, but you have to pay for it?
You have to pay for her, right.
Hotel and any of that?
No, well, I don't want to miss, we get anybody, if you have a room, your spouse can stay in your room with you, you know, for free, but you have to buy, you buy through Parx, you pay additional money personally for their food and...
Okay, that's a point.
And that kind of stuff.
What times are the meetings typically? What day, are they evenings or days?
No, they're usually at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Because there are retirees and...
So they're during business hour?
Not always.
Yes.
For the auditor in, the other city employees is during their working hours.
Well, they're city employees or retirees that are during their working hours.
Right.
When you guys talk about, things have changed, so you have to go to more meetings, get more training. At what point did it change? What precipitated that? I'm guessing it's some kind of legis...
It was.
That you guys have to do this now. What was it before? Like, what was it like before? Where you didn't have, do you not have training, did you not have...
They did, they did have training, it wasn't required. Many of the board members were on there for years.
Like Jim. How many years for you, Jim?
Twenty.
Yeah.
You know, many of the members were on there for years, so it wasn't a requirement. You didn't have to fill out a financial statement. The financial statement is, some people thought it was very invasive, a lot of board members throughout the state left.
And I might add to that, it's not a financial statement just for you, it is for you and any immediate family members. So your wife, your children, your mother, your father...
So how much income and how much you're supporting?
And actually, you have any investments, and who they're with, and what they're about.
Did you see the document you gave us, the big financial disclosure?
Is that where it goes? So you fill it out for, it's a Parx requirement?
Yes, and I think what they're looking for is to make sure there's no conflict of interest in there anywhere, like you don't want to sign something that you're...
When you're dealing with money, you gotta be careful.
It's not only the meetings, I mean, many of us get phone calls at home. I foolishly left my cell phone number with people, but, don't always. Jim gets a lot of phone calls at home, I'm sure Jane gets phone calls here in the office. You know, you have a couple other retired members, but they get phone calls at home.
And what are they, I was curious, what are the questions, what are the...
Can I, yeah, whatever you can think of. Can I retire early if I do this? Can I go here? What do I need to do to get an accidental disability retirement? Yeah, I mean, it just goes, as many questions as you can think of.
I have to tell you that I've always had this issue with people that look at responsibilities differently than hourly wage earners. You have a major responsibility here, you're being paid for that responsibility. In my view, not for how long it takes you to do it. Jim's been on the board for 20 years, he could probably make decisions a lot faster than the new board member, because he's got experience. That's what...
But things are always changing too.
Right, and, but, but that, with that in mind, you're talking about responsibility. I know sometimes meetings might be 20 minutes, sometimes they're two hours. You get a lot of phone calls. It's, to me, and I'm not speaking for any other council, it's not about the time, it's about the responsibility. I am inclined toward this primarily, because it doesn't hit us from the general fund. The unfunded liability and the retirement system operational funding, and the appropriation for which the city is responsible for, is not going to increase, it's not gonna increase at all for a couple of years, and I was told minuscule, I'm gonna confirm that at the next meeting with Melissa, but that's where I'm at. Now, I don't necessarily feel that we have the same, I would love it to be less, I'll be honest with you, because this is in Boston, and they get 3,000, and Springfield and Northampton, much bigger retirement systems, but the minimum is 3,000. So I have, I say, let's start at 1,500, that's where I am.
But I have, I have an issue with what it figures versus smaller.
Okay.
The responsibilities are the same.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
The responsibilities are the same, as a board member, you are responsible for the financial interest of that board. You're responsible to make sure that your due diligence is to make sure the investments are going correctly. You're responsible to make the correct decision for the accidental disabilities, the retirements, the, you know, all of that. Whether you're in a 20, 200 million system or 1 million dollar system, the same responsibility.
Do you make the investments yourself, or do you...
No.
We have, we're with Pritt, and they are the state.
You're making decisions on investments?
We decide where the money gets invested. The board decides where it goes.
But does someone decide where those investments, and you say, that sounds good, okay, or?
It has to be invested somewhere. Now, if, if, and this used to happen, as I understand it, the board members used to invest the money, used to, used to, yeah. They don't do that anymore, I mean...
What happens now, Jim? That's interesting.
We, we place, we place that money. Now, we could place it in three or four different investment companies, you know? And we go to these seminars all the time, and these people, we go sit through hours of presentations, of people telling us, theirs is the best, and here's why, and so we decide. But a number of years ago, we decided to put all of our money, 100% with Pritt, which is the state investment corporation, if you will. And the reason, one of the reasons that we did that at the time, is that at that time, if you had 100% of your money invested with the state, the state used to appropriate a certain amount of money every year, and give up to like $100,000 to a particular retired, you know, all, since the, since the day that we did it, the state never funded it again. But they have done exceedingly well. They've done better than any other investment firm around here. And now, you're required, if you pick an investment firm, you're required to have a consultant that oversees your investment agency, to make sure that, you know, and now they're encouraging you to get a consultant, to look at your consultant. You have to get auditors, you have to get people to, to do your actuarial, all this. If you're with Pritt, they supply all of this at no charge to you. Well, I mean, you still pay your basis points, okay, and they may be a little bit higher, but all of this stuff is included, including some legals, you know? So I, that was a, I feel that was a really good move, and we've done very well with them.
But still, the day-to-day, it sounds like in the past, you used, you guys, you guys, you guys used to make those investment decisions, and now, an investment company...
You're gonna get, right. However, we have the fiduciary responsibility, and this is hammered to us all the time, that just because your money is with an investment firm, doesn't mean you just say, well, there it is. We have to watch all this stuff, we have to look at the investments, you have to see where they're at. If they're not performing well, we have to get somebody down, explain to us why this isn't, you know, there's a, there's a lot to it in keeping track of what the investment firm is doing. Because bottom line, your stories, in the end, you know, if your fund is losing money, nobody cares how, you know what I mean? It's just, well, you were in charge and put it somewhere, and it's losing money. And we're doing, we're doing well with Pritt. And we're over 74% funded already. As a matter of fact, we were able last year to cut back our time, they give you a certain time period to be totally funded. We were able to cut back by a couple of years, the time period, you know, which we did. And that way, if we got, if we ever ran into another, you know, 2008 or something, we can now, we could extend back out again, you know, we have, we keep that, you know?
And when we were talking about the COLAs, we learned that the unfunded liability is doing much better than a lot of cities and towns, and we're doing well, in other words, and that's still the case.
Yes, yes, it is. As a matter of fact, the auditors praised us last year, and wrote something up, and said we were one of the better systems in the state.
I also noticed...
Do you pay Pritt by the value of the fund?
Yes.
Or, so it's percentage?
Yes, so the more money that you have in there...
So it's incumbent on them to increase it?
Correct.
Okay.
That's to their benefit. Well, that's kinda good, I guess. It's like, it's like compensation, when you sell something, you get compensation if you sell so much dollars as a marketing firm or something.
So Karen, this obviously isn't general fund money, but it's still taxpayers' money, obviously, I mean, because you have, we have to pay the retirement.
Exactly. And, you know, and then when you're talking about the 75%, and like, that was, you remember, when we came with the COLAs and everything, a lot of that is because of the large, the percentages that we changed to catch up with the unfunded liability. You remember all that?
Yes, over the years, yes.
Yep, so that is our appropriation. So, I have a question. And I know that it's three, not less than three, and not more than 4,500.
Correct.
But my question comes to the separate piece for the treasurer and the auditor. So, they're already receiving...
1,500.
1,500. So, the, the, the councilors cannot vote to give them 1,500 to make it three?
No. Well, because they can't exceed 4,500 in aggregate.
You know what I'm saying? Okay, let's just start with, for my, for my question purposes, let's just start with the minimum. Say, we're, you know, I know the consideration is three up to 4,500. Say the consideration was for $3,000.
For board members.
Each board member gets $3,000.
Yep.
Okay? That's easy enough. You got that. 3,000, we're good. Now, what if the councilors wanted to say, well, that's, you know, that's great, but we should make the treasurer and the auditor 3,000? How do they go about doing that? Because they're already receiving the 15, they can't give them 15 on the other end, because it's not less than three.
I think I understand. We would have to vote, and I think Joe's right, I'm gonna probably ask the council to move this back to us for the treasurer and the auditor. The treasurer, because she's not a member of the board, we would vote to increase her stipend to 3,000.
Okay.
The auditor, we would vote to maintain the 1,500, but if, and I'm, check, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but because she's a board member, she gets 3,000, but she won't get more than 3,000 between the two.
But that would give her 4,500.
She won't get more than 4,500.
But that would give her 4,500.
Would that give her 4,500?
That's where my question is.
Yes.
So, so if I reduce it to 200, she'd get 3,200.
Correct.
But we don't have the option of saying, if we say no, then she's not getting a stipend for it, and she could say, well, I'm not being paid to do my auditor's work. That's what I, I wanna know.
Yeah, yes, but I think, I think that you, the city council has probably already accepted the legislation that grants them that money. So you would have to reverse that in some way, if that's possible, I don't know.
Because you can't drop it to 200. It's like, if we said...
Yeah, it's gotta be minimum 3,000.
If we said 3,000, from 1,500 to 3,000 is a bit much, we could probably make it 3,200.
The minimum we could do on the stipend level is 200.
You guys are confusing this, actually.
Really? Go ahead, Peg, what's your question?
It sounds like the second question of the auditor and treasurer is also a minimum $3,000 increase.
No. No, not at all.
They have a minimum of 200.
Because that's a stipend.
That was my question.
That's a stipend.
The maximum is 3,000.
We could, we could give the auditor 3,000, and then she'd get six, because she's also a board member.
No, she can't exceed 4,500.
Oh, more than 4,500, that's in the legislation.
Did you see where my question came in?
Yes.
So, so here's the, here's the question. If at one day, they decide that...
Maybe...
The city council will decide that the auditor's not going to be on the board anymore, does that indicate the ex officio...
It's exactly what I was gonna ask. We can't vote it in for a person, we should vote it in for the role.
For the position.
So if you voted in for 3,000 for the auditor, doesn't mean that this particular auditor will get 3,000, she'll get 1,500, right?
Well, no.
Because she can't get more than 4,500 in aggregate.
Yeah, yeah, but, excuse me, she, the auditor, that position, won't be getting the 3,000. She'll, if the auditor's on the board, the board members get the 3,000, if the auditor happens to be a member of the board, she gets 3,000.
Right.
What she gets is a stipend as the auditor, totally different.
Right, so...
Okay, now go back to the stipend.
So, so, so five people get $3,000, thank you very much, you've done a great job.
No, one's the auditor.
Yeah, doesn't matter.
Forget that she's the auditor. Five people get $3,000 rate. Now, we have another question on the table, of what do, what does the auditor and treasurer get?
Correct.
Doesn't matter that that person is also on the, just in general, an auditor and a treasurer could get up to $3,000.
No, because you can't exceed 4,500 in an aggregate.
Yes, forget that, though.
Well, you can't forget that.
You can't, it's part of it.
If the auditor is sitting on the board and getting 2,000.
No, but what I'm saying, maybe I'm not making this clear, forget that she's on
the board.
Oh, she wasn't on the board, she could get up to 3,000.
We're speaking about a specific person, I'm saying, let's be agnostic.
But she's not on the board, she could get...
Let's be agnostic to the person.
Right.
So, board members get 3,000.
Right.
Auditor and treasurer, let's say, we give them 3,000. Let's just say, as a separate...
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So now, a person comes in, she's on the board, she also is getting a stipend from the, from the auditor, because she's the auditor.
Right.
So she'll, wait, hang on, I'm just throwing out a scenario. So she's getting the 3,000 because she's now on the board, she is also the auditor. We've approved auditors to get 3,000. She can't get more than 4,500 in the aggregate, so although we've approved 3,000, we can give her 1,500 to make that 4,500, and the treasurer gets 3,000, because they're not on the board, and everybody's happy.
That's the motion.
But if that, but if that auditor, if the auditor is not on the board, she gets 3,000, and the five board members get 3,000?
No, because the auditor doesn't typically get anything if they're not part of the board. The reason our auditor gets...
But they would get this.
The reason our auditor gets, the reason.
If we approve this?
No, the reason our auditor right now, because she's technically the ex officio of the board, gets 1,500. If she wasn't, if we had, if she wasn't the ex officio, which she is, she'd get nothing. So she doesn't get, an auditor, just an auditor in the city doesn't get 1,500.
But if we approve this?
They get it if they're part of the board. She's that fifth spot. If she was not that fifth spot, she would get zero.
That's incorrect, Karen.
What?
That's incorrect. It's incorrect, yeah. The auditor by statute, if, once it's accepted, which the city council has, gets a certain amount of money. Whether they're on the board, whether they're not on the board, it has nothing to.
Now, do you have a copy of that statute?
I thought it was any financial member, are you saying?
To me, that's what we were talking before, was a financial member and did not have to be the auditor.
That is correct. Whoever that person is that's on the board. But the treasurer and the auditor, he did it like that, not, no name, treasurer and auditor, right. They are a separate entity that the city council chooses to give a stipend to. No matter where they go or what they do, nothing. No, they get it, period. And the reason that they get that is, years ago, they used to do a lot of the work that the administrator does now. And so the state said, well, if they're going to do this work, they should get a stipend from the retirement system for doing the work of the treasurer, the work of the auditor, okay? So they get that regardless if either one of them is on the board or not.
So you're saying you could have five different members of the board, none be a treasurer, none be an auditor?
No, 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 I'm not saying that.
Which brings me back to the 1,500 as one of those people.
Karen, I'm not saying that. The law says that one of the members of the board has to be.
Has to be a financial person.
Right, so you can't.
Exactly.
You can't say that not the auditor or the treasurer or the financial director, one of them has to be on the board.
Exactly. And that's the, it's back to, that's the one that receives the 1,500.
Now I get it, okay.
Do you see what I'm saying?
So one of the members must be the auditor or the treasurer, at least a financial person.
One of the board members.
And that person, the additional stipend.
That's the one, right.
Okay. And that's why we haven't set it 1,500 because it, well, that was the max at the time.
Yes.
And so.
Right, not less than two, correct, Jim?
Yes.
200 to 1,500.
So today, she's only getting 1,500 by being a board member and the auditor.
Correct.
Tomorrow, we're saying if this gets approved, she would get 3,000 plus 1,500 to 4,500.
Correct.
We don't have to do that.
So we can.
That's my question.
We don't have to do 1,500.
No, you don't.
Or we could say zero. We could say zero. She gets the 3,000 by being a member of the board, but she doesn't have to get the $1,500 stipend.
So she gets a raise, but not an aggregate?
All I'm saying, I'm saying I'm pretty sure that. She gets the 3,000 because she's a member of the board, but if we vote to remove the stipend. But we could do zero, what I'm saying.
We could, yeah.
And if, I have to do 200. That's the minimum if you vote a stipend. If you vote no stipend, am I correct on that?
I vote.
These guys want to say something. Jim, Jim, let them say something.
I'm not listening anymore because it gets to bickering and I didn't want to hear it.
No, but, no, seriously.
First of all, no one's bickering.
Tina and Jane, we looked up something. They've been waiting to talk, let them speak.
You're right, those are really good questions.
I am here, so.
There was no bickering.
Guys, 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 Tina and Jane, what did you want to say?
What I read here is part of the letter.
What are you looking at, so we can look at it?
The letter that came from our attorney for the first request that was issued after the 29th. On the second page, in the middle of the page.
I have a, wait, I'm not looking, I haven't found it yet. Is this something that was in the?
Well, actually, I mean, it's, well, I think it was from my.
No, that's Tina, that's from Tina.
From Jim Dunham.
Yes, it's from Jim.
It's from Jim, okay.
Now, does that say a quote between you?
Yes.
It says, it says in the middle of the page, it says, well, the compensation of the auditor was initially established by General, General Law Chapter 32, Section 2040. Not less than 200 nor more than 1,500 per annum. And then the D and a half provides a local option to compensate the auditor. Not less than 200 nor more than $3,000, $3,000 per annum. However, if the auditor also serves as the ex officio member of the retirement board and receives a stipend for self-serving, the auditor can receive a stipend of not more than 4,500 per year.
Right, that's what he was saying.
So the auditor doesn't have to be on the board.
No, but we also, if she's on the board, it says we have an option to pay the stipend. We don't have to pay the stipend.
You have to pay at least 200.
That's not what I'm reading. I'm reading option to pay a stipend. Why do we have to pay that?
Well, because I know in Chapter 32 it says you shall pay the auditor.
No, you just said there was an option, so where's?
The local option could be you could go from 200 to 3,000.
The lit, the lit from 1,500, that's our option.
You can't take all of it away. In a memo from PIRAC, it says, it should be noted that the ex officio board member cannot receive more than the amount accepted by local option. For example, if he or she is receiving 1,500 for services rendered in the active administration of the system pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 20. He or she may receive the stipend in the amount so the aggregate of the payments for services and the stipend equals the total amount of the board member compensation.
That's what I remember. So it's $3,000.
Right.
That's, I'm trying to find that language. That's $3,000. Am I right, Jane?
I'm sorry.
I'm reading that to say $3,000.
But the aggregate.
Not, not to be more than the 45, exactly.
No.
So the board member compensation.
No.
So the board gets the ex officio and what's it?
No law more than a total.
Could you read it again for me, please?
Sure. This is a memo from PIRAC. It says, it should be noted that the ex officio board member cannot receive more than the amount accepted by the local option.
Probably have it.
For example, if he or she is receiving 1,500 for services rendered in the active administration of the system pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 20. He or she may receive the stipend in the amount so that the aggregate of the payments for services and the stipend equals the total amount of board member compensation.
$3,000.
That is correct. And I'll tell you where we got misled.
Exactly.
Our attorney came down and said to us in our office that she can get the 1,500 and the 3,000. We said, are you sure? She can't.
She can't.
No, she can't.
I wish I had that. I need that memo, I know I've had it here someplace.
I mailed it to.
No, Jane, that information that you have, what's?
Can I see what that document looks like from the beginning, on the front page? Because I probably have it. Is it from?
It's from Thomas Gibson.
Oh, I think I have it right at the top here, hold on. Is it December 10th?
Yes.
So what paragraph are you reading?
It's on the, it's on the second page. Yeah, the second page, under, the first section is under the finally appropriated.
I knew I read that someplace.
Yep.
So that, that's where I, to be honest with you, I wasn't going to give the auditor $4,500 and then the treasurer 3,000. I wasn't favored that. But if she's going to get the 3,000, that's why I was going for it, we don't have to get the stipend. This makes it 3,000 max. That's what that says. Everybody's in agreement with that?
I don't know that I'm right in between.
Read it here. Read that, Karen, a couple times. I remember reading it, it made me feel a little.
Yeah, that was, that was exactly what we were asking.
You should have this, Joe. I think all this was available to you. Okay, let's review. Let's review. And I'll, first, Peg, if you have more questions, especially if Jane, not Jane, Tina, because she can't be here, absolutely. We've established what's being asked. The board is being asked, the retirement board is asking that we accept the board members to receive $3,000 per annum per law, minimum. They are supportive of the treasurer, the auditor also getting 3,000. But we've established, and I will write, I request that the city council place this before us because I think Joe's right. You, there's a misunderstanding. You're supporting it, but you're not in a position to ask for that. So let's do that. I will do that so it becomes part of our ongoing concurrent discussion. I'm going to do that. We've established that this is coming from the retirement fund system, that this increase of $15,000 from the operational expenses, which includes Tina's salary, the board member salaries and all the operational expenses, that this increase will not necessarily, will minimally affect the amount of money that we as a city need to fund every year, with 27 million, 2,700,000 we've given now, et cetera. And that it won't necessarily increase unfunded liability. The treasurer used miniscule, and we will discuss that with her at the next meeting. You've decided, you've made your case that there's been a large increase in responsibilities that, and you've made a good case saying it doesn't matter if it's a $2 million retirement fund, a $20 million retirement fund, or a $1 million retirement fund. The responsibilities are the same because of the investment responsibilities you have, administrative responsibilities. The auditor and treasurer do work on administering this fund. That's what the stipend was all about. I know that's where they're coming from, especially the treasurer. She's not a board member, but the treasurer will have to, does a lot of administrative duties, which is why you support them getting an increase in the stipend. Am I correct there? Did I make it wrong? I'm just reviewing this in my head. So basically, my position right now, and I want to hear more about it, is that I'm more inclined to do it, 71 cities and towns, by the way, have accepted this, if I'm reading Dan's memos, his notes. At various levels, 3,000, there is in this document if you want to get.
Right, I don't know how many, because retirement boards can be, how many?
There are 105.
105.
Yeah.
And I want the 1057.
Every time we get the thing, it's 1-5, 1-3, 1-4, whatever.
Joe, I think there's a lot of documentation in here that if you don't have it, you should get. Or we should provide it to all the city councilors. But that's, that was a good one where it showed the cities and towns and what boards. You got that, right, Peg? It's in here. Here it is here, it's a PIRAC document, Joe.
So there may be more now.
You can look at that.
And it's on how quickly they update their website. It's on the PIRAC website.
But that's, that's what influences me, okay? That's where I am right now. I want to hear more. Hey, you don't have to state an opinion here.
At the risk of muddying the waters further. So, just so I understand, and anyone can answer, feel free. So as I, as we just talked about it, so if we, if we give the board members $3,000, although the auditor gets 1,500, now, don't everybody jump down my throat? Would they get, would they still get the 1,500 from the fund called stipend? And then only $1,500 from the other thing? Because they can't get more than 3,000, so.
It's all funded by the retirement fund.
No, because.
Yeah, it would be whatever our bookkeeping, you know, we can say, yes, this is part of the stipend, yes, this is part of the retirement.
Or they get not that second piece of the stipend for, that we're raising the limit on or not. Because today she's getting, so today she's getting 1,500 from something funded by a municipal?
No, that's what I was.
Hang on, you're jumping down my throat. I don't understand.
All of it's funded through the retirement system.
That's what I'm talking about.
The PIRAC memo, the way I'm reading that note, it's the, right now, the auditor and the treasurer are receiving for services. Where the board would receive a stipend. So the memo says, between the services and the stipend, it cannot exceed what the board gets for the stipend.
Now, my question is, if I understand that at some point we adopted, just like we might adopt this, we adopted something that let us, that we said we were going to give the treasurer and the auditor $1,500. Do we need to change that so the sum becomes 3,000? Or will that law make it, it'll do it for us?
It would be something that D and a half. You would have to change it because the treasurer was given 1,500 under what you have already appropriated.
We, we didn't appropriate because it's retirement money, but I was going to say, we gave, it sounds from a night, don't have a memory, it sounds like we said $1,500. But if we now have to max out at 3,000, either we need to mainly change that amount or does that, that $3,000 trumpet and it will be adjusted to compensate for it?
No, we have to have a separate vote on that. That has to be a separate motion and a separate vote to change the amount of stipends received from 1,500 to 3,000. But because of the law, the auditor doesn't get 4,500, the auditor gets 3,000. We could change the stipend, okay? Now, if, because it has to be a financial member, even if the auditor switches back to the finance director being on the board, nothing changes with regard to compensation because they're both, that law says, because it's coming from the same system, this is how I'm understanding it, the retirement system is paying for it, that's where PIRAC and the law is coming down. They're saying, yeah, but the system will only pay the auditor no more than the board gets. The board gets 3,000 even though she has a stipend of 1,500.
See, to me, we'd have to change the stipend to zero so it becomes 3,000. Because if we, if we said that the stipend is 1,500, then it becomes 4,500. Now granted, according to that memo, it can't be that, but the question is, do we?
Well, that's a good question.
Change it to zero because if, no, because if, as Peg brought up.
I know where you're going.
The auditor is not a board member, would still, you would still want.
Have services to do.
And you would still want the services stipend in effect.
But here we go.
But if they, and if it went to the treasurer getting the ex officio seat, it would be the same thing. The treasurer would only get the 3,000, whatever the board compensated.
So by saying, right now, we say the treasurer's going to get 3,000. She's not a member of the board, but the most she can get is 3,000. If it was the auditor, we should also say in that same, that same motion, that the auditor gets 3,000. Because the law says that doesn't mean she gets 6 or 4,500, she can only get 3,000. So in the future, if they change roles and the treasurer goes back to being a board member, no compensation changes.
But do you want to put it at 3,000? It's already at what, 1,500? You'd have to double.
If we, if, my opinion, if we're going to give the auditor 3,000, which she's going to get because she's a board member, I do not want to deny the treasurer the 3,000.
The treasurer does a lot of work on the.
She does a tremendous amount of work.
The treasurer does a lot of work for the retirement board, the processing, the checks, the balancing.
So that's fine. I mean, if that, if it's justifiable to increase that stipend as well.
And I think, actually, it's just semantics really, when you're saying, does he get 15 or 3 over here or 3 or 15 over here? It's all the, you know what I mean? It all comes from the same pot, the same people.
I have to thank Jane for reminding me of that, that language, because I remember reading it. Oh, that makes me feel better. It doesn't have to be 4,500. Because I didn't want to give, I have to be honest. The auditor getting 4,500 and the treasurer getting 3,000 and the board members getting, that, that doesn't sit well with me because I think there's equal work. And I want to make sure it's equal, if we're going to do it at all.
No, I'm sorry, did you say?
The treasurer is not on the board, whereas the auditor.
For the best of the case, I have, we've had.
You have the position.
That's what I have a new feeling.
So that, so that person doesn't go to meetings, is that correct? Because it's not a board member.
The treasurer, right now, does not go to meetings.
Okay, so we're giving someone $3,000 who doesn't go to meetings, but does work.
A lot of work.
Okay, so the compensation is the work they do.
A lot of services, that's what I'm saying, okay.
She services the retirement board.
If we choose not to give her a stipend, who does the work?
The auditor.
She has to.
Yeah.
Well.
Is today she getting anything?
She gets 1500. So I'm not going to take that away from her, but I, as again, if we're going to increase the auditor's fee and the board member's fee, I don't feel comfortable saying.
But the auditor would be playing two roles, as a board member, attending meetings, doing all that, and providing a service.
No, well.
I mean, if you want to parse it out, but yeah. Whereas the treasurer is providing a service, not attending meetings, so. a service, not attending meetings, so.
I'm going to be blunt, the treasurer's service is very extensive compared to the auditor's.
And that's fine, but we just, you know, just so we understand how we're parsing it out.
Right.
If we think that that's worth three thousand, then absolutely.
And, and I have, I, can I have a question?
No.
The floor recognizes the mayor.
We recognize the queen.
I, I understand all of that, my question is, do the, the councilors have to do something in the future, you know, to, to, to think of what might happen in the future if you have an auditor that does not want to be part of the board?
But that's your decision.
Then, we could change the stipend at any time.
How? What I'm saying is.
You go back in and you do, you go law.
What I'm saying is, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I almost, I'm thinking we should, I think, considering the workload the treasurer does, it should almost make more sense that the treasurer needs to be on the board, because that way, that would at least be the three thousand dollars plus.
And if the treasurer was.
She didn't want to be on the board, okay.
No, no, that, that's totally irrelevant, but that's, that's exactly where I'm going with this, if you had the treasurer on the board because requirement is a finance person, and the auditor decide, you know, the auditor decided, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have time for this anymore.
Who gets to pick which financial member goes on the board, who gets to.
Well, first of all, you have to have one that wants to be, and it has to be somebody from the finance office.
We have a law that says you have to have one of them.
Right, I appoint, um, I appoint a person, which be, which now is Jane, which before was Melissa, but the auditor, you know, was already there as that point, so what I'm saying is, if in the future, we have an auditor, again, not the person, the position, that does not want to be on the board.
They would get three thousand.
Then what, and you had.
They still get the stipend because it switches to the treasurer.
Thank you, right, you see where I'm going with it?
I did, yeah.
Not to, you know, bring, I don't want to add any confusion, but that's my question, do you need to do something, you know, to protect a future position, not person, obviously this, this works great here.
Right.
You know, but what happens?
The day could happen.
I don't know if you can write that line.
Yes, you can, you could, because.
They're two separate things.
In the statute, if I remember correctly, it's board, auditor.
Treasurer, there's three separate sections.
But the auditor and treasurer, stipend has to be a separate motion, if you want to limit that.
They could be two separate ones, two different, one could be fifteen hundred, one fifteen thousand.
We could make the auditor's fifteen hundred, but she still gets her three thousand, but that doesn't deny the fact that if the auditor's no longer on the board, the auditor will get the fifteen hundred.
Right.
In the future.
Whatever we set the.
Whatever auditor it is.
That's all they're going to get, they won't get a board if they're not.
So that's, that's something to consider, yeah, I see, I see where you're going with that, Joe.
Who does?
I mean, the good news, luckily, these are separate issues, I mean, I think this board, so this, obviously, this treasurer auditor thing has to be worked out.
Yep.
You know, there's a lot of, as you say, you brought up a couple scenarios that need to be thought out, but at least the, this part is.
But.
Because, and again, because this could very well happen, we have an auditor, and she, if she happened to just say, I'm just, my time constraints, I can no longer, or a new auditor, somebody comes in, I can, I cannot, you know, I do not want to be on the retirement board, and, you know, and then we have the, the treasurer then steps in to be on the retirement board, we got that, there's a three, we got that.
Yeah.
But what, so we have somebody that's getting three thousand that isn't part of the board or doing the services.
They would get whatever we assign to the auditor, which right now is fifteen hundred.
But what you were talking about is three.
We could keep it at that, we could keep it at fifteen hundred.
But if we upped it to three, then she would get three.
She would get three as no.
The auditor.
Part of the board or.
And, and.
So what's the role of the auditor?
Because she's not the auditor of the retirement board, to let you know.
She audits all accounts, and part of those accounts includes.
And so she acts as a subject matter expert.
No, she's not the auditor of the retirement board.
And what is, why would she get assigned for the retirement board?
Part, part of her duties every month is to review the expenses of the retirement board, and she signs off on.
But she does that for every other account, too, right?
It's kind of a checking balance. I'm sorry.
I mean, that's her job, right, for all accounts?
You have an external auditor as well, is that correct?
Yes.
There's an external auditor?
Well, we have an audit.
Two external auditors.
Right.
Well.
I get it, so that's, that's the differentiator, is.
Just bringing it up.
Trying to understand, if you look at them as standalone positions for a stipend, exclusive of being on the board, what is the value of that role vis-à-vis a stipend?
Sounds like to me the treasurer does much more.
And they're separate. Yeah, it sounds like it to me as well.
Definitely.
But if we vote the treasurer's stipend at three thousand and the auditor at fifteen hundred, we're keeping the auditor where she is, should she no longer be a member of the board?
Correct.
I would not be in favor of reducing it to zero, I just want to say that, the auditor's to zero, and the stipend side.
And I'm not suggesting any of that, I'm just throwing it out there for the future, if future employees, you know, are.
Exactly.
It's a good discussion.
But it is a good discussion, because I think there's a level of service, and we're not denying an increase in our current auditor, because she's on the board, she's going to get the three thousand should we vote to sit.
So you know where my question is going, right where you're talking.
It's where she was going, for the future.
Fifteen and the fifteen, can we do the fifteen and the fifteen to make it to three, and then if something happened in the future and that person did not want to be on there, you know what I'm saying?
But if we keep it fifteen for the treasurer, that's not fair, in my opinion.
So the three thousand dollars is the maximum, you know, how we give the board?
The forty-five hundred is the maximum.
For a board member, but the three thousand dollars is the stipend for the treasurer and or the auditor, the maximum is three thousand, if you know where it has been, fifteen hundred to three thousand.
But my point being.
With not to exceed a total of forty-five hundred.
That's.
That's a, if they're.
If the board has been approved.
Just board members.
If a board member is also the auditor, the most they can. But my point being, the auditor, current system, is going to get three thousand if we vote this in, I do not feel comfortable voting less for the treasurer.
Absolutely.
I don't feel comfortable doing that, because the services, everybody's getting an increase, but the person who's doing a lot of service, that's, I'm not comfortable with that, so I don't know where the other councilors would be, but I'm, in other words, if we're going to give the board, which includes the auditor, three thousand dollars, we're going to give the treasurer three thousand, that's right. Listen, we're not voting on this today, let's dwell on it.
Right.
And back with other questions, okay?
And we, we want to remember, really, that this is two separate issues, even though this is very involved and it does can, you know.
Well, they're together, they're concurrent issues, but they're separately voted issues, which means they have to be separately sent, to make, to be kosher, it has to be separately sent to the council, which I will write up and put it in the agenda, we'll move it to the council, so we can discuss it on the twenty-seventh as a proper motion moving forward, does that make sense, Joe?
And FYI, for the new councilors and for you, Mr. McCoy, if you, if you don't already know, just the makeup of the board, okay, it's a five-member board, one of the members is the ex officio member, whoever that is from.
The auditor.
Usually, in most cases, I'd say, now you said, it's the auditor. And then you have two positions that are elected, okay, by the current and retired employees, okay, they vote, run an election, and those, those terms are staggered, so they're never at the same time, okay, and then there's a mayoral appointment, the mayor picks somebody, anybody in the world that she wants to be, and that person's on the